Hello, I'm J. Jermaine Bay of Alodian Voice Paradeum, Ante Callarotta. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 111, Class 111. What did we learn in Class 110? Well, we took the time to start reading over Chapter 7 of the Charter of the United Nations. Right, and Chapter 7, just to give you a quick brief, is about the breaches of peace, right? Threats to peace and aggression, right, against peace. So it's all about acts, acts of threats and acts of breaches and acts of aggression, right? So the United Nations is trying to minimize these types of contentious disputes on planet Earth between states, right? But when you started to get into Chapter 7, Chapter 7 starts to talk about how the Security Council is responsible for being the referee of planet Earth to maintain peace and security, right? But as we started to really read over Chapter 7, not only is the Security Council of the United Nations responsible, but it also says in Chapter 51, or should I say Article 51, that all states have a right to self-defense, no matter what. No state has to wait on the United Nations to come and provide military support for them. All states have a right to defend themselves, just like any human being on planet Earth has a right to self-defense, right? All of us have that right, okay? It's an inalienable right, right? But when it comes to states, states have to be very careful that way they don't start wars all the time, right? So it's all about trying to minimize the chance of war. So therefore, the United Nations is doing a good job of trying to put in reforms that minimizes the cost of life, right? Because when states go to war, the scourge of war, no one wins, right? People unfortunately perish during wars, right? And at the end of the war, what does everybody ultimately end up doing? Signing some form of a treaty, right? So therefore, if in fact the war ends because of a treaty, then why not try to utilize politics to stop the war in advance in the first place with a pen, right? Seeking foreign relations and seeking peace amongst all states. All states are supposed to try to achieve a level of being a good neighbor to all states, right? But what else did we learn about Article 51 of the Charter? Well, Article 51 gives Moors the right to defend ourselves. But the thing is, Moors should not try to defend themselves as a lone star state. We have to come together and unite. We have to have all of our states come together to protect each other, right? We're more powerful, we're stronger together, right? So that's why we need the United States of Morocco Alliance to come together, right? Have each other's back, the same way NATO, right? The North Atlantic Treaty Organization, the European States come together. If you infringe the rights of one of their NATO members, then you've infringed on the rights of all the NATO states, right? And this is what Moors have to achieve, the same level of understanding. We all have to come together and say, "An attack on one of our Moroccan states is an attack on all of our states." So we're learning about this, right? But what else did we learn in Class 110? Well, we're starting to understand that the United Nations has put together resolutions commonly referred to as counterterrorism, right? And under counterterrorism, we're starting to learn the United Nations put together some resolutions that started to forbid terrorism, started to forbid the fact that any state can start to detain your diplomats, et cetera, right? Your protected persons of your state. So the United Nations put together a resolution that says it's a crime, right? To detain diplomats or protected persons of a state. You can't do it, it's outlawed in international law. And why is it so important for Moors to understand? It's because as the Moors get into statehood, obviously our elected officials will be diplomats. They'll be on the protected persons list as diplomats. At the same time, we'll have a protected persons list for the former Moorish subject name, right? A lot of Moors are concerned with what they commonly call the straw man. Well, it's not a straw man. It's a Moorish subject according to the Treaty of Madrid, right? Of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, said that the Moorish subject, right? Any subject of Morocco must return to Morocco, right? So what it really says, any subject that's been naturalized in a foreign country. Well, all the Moors have been naturalized in a foreign country, commonly known as the United States of America, right? And it gives further instructions for that Moor to return to Morocco. Well, what's the name of that Moor? Well, that Moor's name as an example is Kendrick Johnson. That's who the foreign country has on their registration that's the protected Moorish subject. So what we're learning is Kendrick Johnson as an example is the Moorish subject that has to return to Morocco, right? And choose between the entire submission to the law of the empire. Well, what laws? Well, there can only be laws of a state, right? And that's why I continue on to say, in the Madrid Convention, Article 15, Paragraph 1, it says that you must return to what? Moroccan government. Well, a Moroccan government is represented by what? A state. So all the Moors have to return to Moroccan state government. But what's the name of the Moor? Well, you have to first start with the Moorish subject name, for example, Kendrick Johnson. We're learning this. Now, when Kendrick Johnson returns to Morocco through an application and consent back to Moroccan state, then Kendrick Johnson can change his name to Kendrick Bay. But Kendrick Bay and Kendrick Johnson are now protected legal personalities under Moroccan law, right? So you say Kendrick Bay ex exelon, Kendrick Johnson. Or you say Kendrick Bay, also known as Kendrick Johnson, because you already know that in the matrix of the United States, they know Kendrick Bay as being Kendrick Johnson. So now you have to protect both the Kendrick Bay and the Kendrick Johnson name. But how do you protect it? Well, first of all, you protect it under Moroccan law. Well, you can't have Moroccan law unless you have a Moroccan state, because it's state and that's law through its legislative branch, right? So once we have Moroccan laws that protect both names, that Kendrick Bay name might end up being a diplomat of the state, right? So now that's a diplomat, and the state recognizes that diplomat as a protected person on a diplomat list with privileges and immunities. But the state also has another list of protected persons called the former Moorish subjects, right? Who are on the protected person list. So you got two separate protected person lists, one for diplomats and one for the former Moorish subject names. Once you have both of those lists, now they both are protected under Moroccan law of the state. And now you can start to invoke international law to protect both of those legal personalities, okay? So as we started reading over the resolution, and we'll finish that up today, the Moors should understand, there's already laws on the books that protects us as government officials. But the problem the Moors had is that we were not the de jour of government official. We run around saying we was the prime minister and consul general and a vizier, and we had all these fancy titles and all those patently frivolous and arbitrary capricious, and that's the truth, right? We were not the common authority of a state. We were all self-appointed and state lists, Moors, right? And since you were stateless Moor, that meant you had no Moroccan laws to protect you. So by default, you ended up back in the jurisdiction of Oz. And Oz had what? Legislation of the United States, federal government, right? They got their legislative acts. And then you fell victim to all the several 50 charter states, because all their charter states also have legislative acts, right? They have their bylaws. So by default, the Moors end up right back as Dorothy in Oz and didn't realize, right? So in Class 110, what do we really take away from that? Well, the Moors have to learn how to become the competent authority of their state. And once you're the competent authority of your state, now international law protects you under what they call the customs of international law, right? So the customs of international law protects the state as a person. And then you have what's called the periphery norms of international law. What does the periphery norms of international law protect? Where it protects the human rights. So the state has rights under customary norms of international law, and it's an umbrella, right? The customary norms of international law is an umbrella. And underneath that is the periphery norms of international law, which is for human rights. And the diplomat has human rights to be a diplomat of the state under periphery norms of international law, just coaches, which is human rights. And then the state also has rights under customary international law. So when you put both of those together, you got human rights of periphery norms, and then you got customary norms of international law, you put those two together, that's very powerful. Especially when it comes to diplomats, because how is it that your state, everyone may to represent itself through what's commonly known as mediation and arbitration if in fact you don't have no officials of your state, right? So that's what we gotta take away from what we were studying in Class 110, that the Moors now are becoming the competent authority of their state, and because of that, they have privileges and immunities to be able to enforce international law against any belligerent state that's causing an injury against your state's diplomats and protected persons, all right? So let's go ahead and get in the class, we'll keep talking about that today. Okay, as the Moors know, always open up the Constitution. Constitution is paramount. Without the Constitution, you cannot enforce international law. That must be understood. The Constitution recognizes the three branches of government. And the three branches of government has diplomats and officers and people working for the state, right? And that's what gives them the protections, because the head of state automatically puts together the list. So the head of state and the Minister of Foreign Affairs work together to put together a diplomatic list. And the head of state and the Minister of Foreign Affairs make sure there's a list for all the protected persons, i.e. the former Moorish subjects, all right? That must be understood. So without the Constitution, you can't protect your nationals with international law, because the Constitution would give you the portal to get access to international law, okay? It's very important to understand, Moors. All right, let's continue. Real quick, there's the contact information for ANPAC. All right, so right now, we're in the Charter, right? We're in Chapter 7. As a reminder, Chapter 7 is about actions with respect to threats to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression, right? That's what Chapter 7 is all about, how to protect your state, right? Sometimes if you have opportunity to go to the United Nations and tell them about your contentious dispute, now you can get into negotiations, right? But sometimes you have to have an immediate response to an act of threats, right? So therefore, I narrated down to these three words. I said, threats, breaches, and aggression. And all of these are acts, so it's acts of aggression. There's acts that are breaches. And there's acts that are threats to the peace. And all these things are threats to the peace, right? And you have to maintain security really quickly, all right? Those are three words Moors have to understand. But why is it so important to understand threats, breaches, and aggression of peace? Well, because now that the Moors being more germane about the Moors, Moors right now trying to decolonize. And through our various stages of advancement and decolonization, we're gonna deal with what? Threats, we're gonna deal with breaches, and we're gonna deal with acts of aggression. That now we can query down to understand that we can label it through our Moroccan laws as being acts of terrorism, right? Because decolonization in itself is a terrorist act. And this is what Moors have to do. We have to enact legislation that starts to recognize certain actions that the colonists do against our state and against our diplomats and against our protected persons and start to list those various things as terrorist acts, right? That's what we have to do as Moors, okay? Now, keep in mind, in Class 110, we started reading over the United Nations on their website. One of their committees, one of their organs is commonly known as the Office of Counterterrorism, okay? That's what you win, send forth legal instruments, okay? And when we scroll down, we found a subsection that talked about how do you protect the staff, right? Your diplomats, all your officials of the state, right? That's from the head of state on down to wherever the lowest ranking official is of the state. Let's say it's a sheriff, your sheriff, right? Anyone who the state recognizes as an official, right? And then you got the protected persons list as well, okay? So what did we learn in Class 110? So as a recap, okay, we'll read these two titles, and then we'll get into this summary right here, okay? So let's go ahead and start right here.
Instrument regarding the protection of international staff. 1973 Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons.
Pause, okay. So as I talked about in Class 110, this is an instrument, right? Proper written instrument, not some verbal decree, it's properly written, right? So it says, "Instrument regarding the protection of international staff." So therefore, they wrote a resolution in 1973, commonly known as the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment, so that's the duality, of crimes against internationally protected persons. This is what Moors should have always known about, since the Moors have been running around talking about they're the officers of a state. Well, why did they know about this? But let's learn, right? Okay, let's read these two bullet points.
Defines an internationally protected person as a head of state, minister of foreign affairs, representative or official of a state or international organization who is entitled to special protection in a foreign state and his/her family.
Pause. Okay, let's look at this first bullet point. Okay, first of all, the title says what? "Instrument regarding the protection of international staff. 1973 Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons." First bullet point. Defines an internationally protected person as a head of state, minister of foreign affairs, representative or official of a state. Now listen, this part right there, and this message is to Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans who claim you got these positions of power because you the officer, you self-appointed, tell me the name of the state that recognizes you officer for that state. It don't exist, right? It's a rhetorical question. Moorish Americans are not the competent authority of a state. They're absolutely stateless when they call themselves Moors. Because you say you're a Moor, when you say you're Moor. The word Moor is abbreviation for Moor, well, you can't prove that you're a Moor or Moroccan, because you have failed to follow the provisions of the treaty that said you have to return to Morocco. So therefore, you turn around and say you're an officer of what? Is it the officer of a state? And they can't prove it, can they? No, but here's the instructions, Moor. My point is this. It's not to embarrass the Moors. This is ANPAC study session, right? So it's an educational platform to point out what we did wrong and then correct it. If you're gonna point out the dirty water, you must also offer the clean water, right? Here's the clean water, Moors. These are specific instructions, right? That gives what? Specific performance. And I'm showing the Moors, this is how we have to perform. This is what all civilized people do on planet Earth. They follow these prescriptions. Listen, okay. What's a protected person says defines an internationally protected person as a head of state. So what protects you as the head of state? Listen, what protects you? What protects you as head of state? Right here, it says international law. It says internationally protected. They're telling you what's the law you use. International law, right? But yet, your constitution is a subject of international law. Because without your constitution, you ain't the officer anyway. So your Moroccan constitution automatically is a subject of international law, because it is literally the key, the port to get access to international law. So your constitution is part and parcel to international law. And your constitution recognizes you as the head of state, okay? That's important to understand. Okay, so with this first bullet point. Say it again. So a protected person defines an internationally protected person as a head of state, capital S, minister of foreign affairs, and representative of, representative or official of a state or international organization who is entitled to special protection in a foreign state and his or her family, right? Okay, second bullet.
Requires parties to criminalize and make punishable by appropriate penalties which take into account their grave nature. The intentional murder, kidnapping, or other attack upon the persons of liberty of an internationally protected person. A violent attack upon the official premises, the private accommodations, or the means of transport of such person. A threat or attempt to commit such an attack and an act constituting participation as an accomplice.
Okay, so what we learned is second bullet point is about criminalizing, right? It's about criminalizing. If you violate this resolution, it's considered a criminal act. And a criminal act is what? Punishing. Well, the question is, who do you punish? Okay, they tell you who you punish. Come down here, it says, "The attack, the injury, the attack, the act is constituting participation as an accomplice." So it's the accomplices. That's anyone who was involved with the act. Well, what type of act? Okay, here we go. The act is what? Threats, breaches, aggression. These are all acts. Okay, now the Moors have to turn around and define what these things are. Okay, what are the Moors considered to be threats? What are the Moors considered to be breaches? What are the Moors considered to be aggression? These are all acts. So we need what type of law? We need laws that talk about these acts, right? We need an act of aggression, legislative act, bill. We need an act regarding breaches. We need an act regarding threats. We need to break these things down. This is how you become the competent authority of your state. You define these things. However, the Moors don't have to overthink the process. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, because guess what? The United Nations already wrote it. You just copy paste, plug and play, right? Okay, watch this. We already started reading it. Okay, so Moors, you're trying to define some stuff. Okay, here's some definitions right here, all ready. You see? You copy paste, plug and play. All right, now let's click on this link for the 1973 Convention on the Prevention and Punishment, which is duality, if you're preventing this crime or you're punishing the crime. That's it, right? So the 1973 Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons. Now let's click on it, okay? Okay, so we already ran down to, I think, Article 3. We're gonna recap real quick, at least read the title, okay? So let's make sure we read the title in just a moment. Okay, let's take it from the top.
Multilateral Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons, including diplomatic agents, with Resolution 3166 of the General Assembly of the United Nations, adopted by the General Assembly of the United Nations at New York on the 14th of December of 1973.
Okay, so in 1973, the United Nations passed this resolution, a multilateral resolution, commonly known as the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons, listen, including diplomatic agents. So who's the protected person? Well, states are persons in international law, right? So protects the state as a person, right? And anyone else that the state identifies as a protected person. You know how the police would say, "Oh, we got this person in the protected persons witness program," right? Just a moment. We got this person in the witness program, right? Protected person. Protected person is a protected person. So you have to understand how they broke it down. Just in the title alone, they made a distinction between two legal personalities. I'll read it again. Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons. So states are supposed to do what? Prevent, it's supposed to be a prevention, right? To make sure that no one's afflicting against the rights of protected persons, right? So it should be a prevention, right? But at the same time, you gotta punish states and individuals who are infringing against the rights of protected persons. Then it continues to say, "Including diplomatic agents." Two legal personalities, right? That's what Moors gotta take away from this thus far. Okay, now let's go ahead and scroll down. We were reading it, oh, let me pause right here. Okay, so who's a party? Who became a party to this contract, i.e. this resolution, i.e. this international law? Okay, so it says right here, "Date of deposit of the instrument of ratification or accession." Okay, so you scroll down, and you come down, and you see all these names, these states, right? Look who's on there. The United States of America became a contracting party in 1976. And they're bound to this contract now, you see? And don't let them fool you, so is all their 50 charter states. Because anything that the United States has become a party to through their constitutional procedures, through their House Representative, the Senate, pass it over to the President of the United States, the President signs it into law, they deposit it with the United Nations, and according to Article 102, now all their lower so-called 50 charter states are also bound to it as well, right? Because it's a treaty. What we're reading right now is called a treaty. Anything that comes to the United Nations is a treaty. And the United States says, according to their Article 6 of their Constitution, that treaty supreme law of the land. See, the word treaty is a generic word. But what defines a treaty? Anytime two or more states sign off on an international agreement. If it's only two states, then it's a bilateral treaty. If it's more than two states, if it's three or more states, it immediately becomes a multilateral treaty. The United States and the United States of America's constitutions, right? We're talking the United States of America Constitution, 1789, Article 6. And we're talking the United States International Organization Constitution of 1871. Both of them, Article 6 says treaty supreme law of land. So what we're reading right here is supreme law of land even over the governors, even over the Supreme Court, Justice Roberts, who sits in the chair right now in the year 2023. So don't ever let them fool you to think that there are several charter states are not bound to the treaties. This is why you read their constitution, you see, "Oh, y'all are obligated to treaties." And guess who else is obligated to treaties? Their judges, legislators, executive branch, right? All three of their branches are obligated, no matter what, to that treaty supreme. Okay, if that's the case, that means they have already agreed that they have to either prevent or punish the crime of infringing against the rights of diplomats and protected persons, right? Which means the United States and all their 50 governors have to protect the diplomats of Moroccan states, because they signed this contract to prevent injury, right? And if the United States and the governors don't protect the diplomats of Moroccan states, now they can be punished for not protecting the diplomats' rights of the Moroccan states. You gotta understand what I'm saying here, all right? Okay, let's go down now to, we left off on, I believe, Article 3. Let's recap. Okay, I'm ready.
Article 3, 1. Each state party shall take such measures as may be necessary to establish its jurisdiction over the crimes set forth in Article 2 in the following cases. A, when the crime is committed in the territory of that state or on board a ship or aircraft registered in that state. B, when the alleged offender is a national of that state. C, when the crime is committed against an internationally protected person as defined in Article 1, who enjoys his status as such by virtue of functions which he exercises on behalf of that state. 2, each state party shall likewise take such measures as may be necessary to establish its jurisdiction over these crimes in cases where the alleged offender is present in its territory and it does not extradite him pursuant to Article 8 to any of the states mentioned in Paragraph 1 of this article.
Okay, let's continue.
3, this convention does not exclude any criminal jurisdiction exercise in accordance with international law. Article 4, states' parties shall cooperate in the prevention of the crimes set forth in Article 2 particularly by, A, taking all practicable measures to prevent preparations in their respective territories for the commission of those crimes within or outside their territories. B, exchanging information and coordinating the taking of administrative and other measures as appropriate to prevent the commission of those crimes.
Pause, okay, so Article 4. Okay, it says, "The state..." Okay, it says, the states' parties shall cooperate in the prevention of the crimes set forth in Article two particularly by, A, taking all practicable measures to prevent preparations in their respective territory for the commission of those crimes within or, or outside their territories. In other words, states should already put some legislative act in or some foreign policy that says, if in fact we do something infringing against the rights of your diplomats, w- we're willing to hold ourselves accountable. Let's get into some type of bilateral agreement about that. Right? Okay, let's sit right here. Section B. Exchanging information and coordinating the taking of administrative and other measures as appropriate to prevent the commission of those crimes. So how do you pre, how do you prevent a crime? Right, so if a crime happens, we should have an agreement that says, how are we gonna deal with it? Right, we're gonna extradite that person to our territory so we can, uh, adjudicate them, right? But this should really be about, how do we prevent this in the first place of there being any misunderstanding about who our diplomats are or who our protected persons are, right? How do you prevent it? Right, these are instructions we're reading, Moors. I wanna say it again. You're reading instructions. The Moors should understand, these are specific instructions on an international level. What is the scope of what we should do to enact legislative acts or an act foreign policy with another state? Right, because it tells you right here. This is called specific performance. Right here, section B. Exchanging information and coordinating the taking of administrative and other measures as appropriate to prevent the commission of those crimes. How do we prevent the crime of the United States and their governors from mistakenly detaining one of our diplomats or protected persons? How do we prevent that? Because that's what the instructions say. We gotta write something, don't we? Okay, listen. Okay, listen. The United States put together, it's called a consul notification access. And in the consul notification access, access, it will list states that they basically have a bilateral agreement with that says, okay, if American national diplomats or protected persons get caught up in your jurisdiction, we have a bilateral agreement on how you're gonna treat those Americans. And in like manner, if your national get caught up in the jurisdiction of the United States or deal with one of their several fifty governors, then we're gonna treat your national in a certain way. So it's a bilateral agreement, all right? That's what the consul notification access is about. Notifying your state that you have detained one of their diplomats or protected persons. That's what this is about. But that's what the United States wrote. Where, where's the Moors documentation? Where's the Moors in terms of following the instructions? Listen. Have the Moors followed, followed the instructions of Article four, section B, to let the United States know who's on our protected diplomat list? Have the Moors put together a protected persons list of the former Moors subject name of Kendrick Johnson? Kendrick Johnson's on the list, and Kendrick Bay's on the list, several lists. One's a diplomat, the other one's a protected person, right? Okay. Have the Moors done that? Especially the Moors Americans? No. Have the Moroccan states been doing that? Yes. Okay, just a moment. Just a moment. All right. So Moroccan states, the recognized Moroccan states have been putting together these lists. Now, we're, we're sending this information to the United States and we're sending it to the governors, right, of their jurisdictions. Okay? Letting them know what's up, who's on the list. Now, it could be no pause with non-ability, but yet, we gotta go further. What's the next step? Okay, we go back to the instructions. Listen, Moors. The, the instructions under Article four, section B, say, you have to put together some measures, some measures as appropriate to prevent the commission of those crimes. How do we put something in to prevent the crime from happening in the first place? Okay. Listen, Moors. So now we're familiar with the CNA, right? The CNA. Now the Moors themselves have to create our own CNA. Right, we have to create our own CNA. Okay, Moors, so, so let's take a look at what the Moors, the Moors should have had put in place. Okay? So what all the Moroccan states are doing right now, we're, we're converting the United States CNA, right, consul notification access document. We're converting it. That way, it now talks about how the United States should treat Moroccan diplomats, right, and not protected persons. It was our obligations, according to international law, we had to follow the specific performance of international law reforms. It was our job to send to the United States and the governors how they should treat us as diplomats and treat us as protected persons. That was our obligation. Right? So this right here is a conversion, right? So now you can, the Moors will learn more about this as you get into statehood. You, you will see this. Okay? You, you will see this, and, and once you get into statehood, the Moors will start understanding, you'll have specific instructions on what the United States should do if in fact they pull over one of our diplomats. If in fact they pull over and find out that the former Moors subject is protected under Moroccan law because our Moroccan law has already given specific instructions to the United States federal government as well as to the governors. This is how you treat us, because we're cohabitating in Morocco. The Americans are sharing jurisdiction with Moroccans. Moroccans are sharing jurisdiction with Americans. We're cohabitating in the same land under two sets of, of rules in terms of laws. And we must have what's called effective communication with the United States based upon who's on our diplomat list and who's on our protected persons list. It's just that easy. Right, this, so the Moors are in the absence, or shall I say, the Moors were in the absence. Okay, just a moment. Moors were in the absence of letting the United States know who's on the list, okay? So now I'm gonna go over to a page and show the Moors a list, okay? You see that? Hopefully, the Moors can see that at home. All right. This says, to the United States. This is one of the pages. It says, basic instructions. Mandatory notification list of Moroccan states, including the state of Alodim Morris Predium Anti Colorado in the Empire Morocco. So right here, I have a list of six Moroccan states. It's the mandatory list that the United States has to recognize our state, and they recognize the state as a person in international law. So the state is protected now. And any officials are protected on the list that these six states have listed as protected persons, right? So this is what Moors were in the absence of. The Moors had to create what's called a, a, a legal argument, right? A legal nature. What creates a legal argument or legal nature? Well, it's only three or four things. First, you have to have a law. It's only about laws and case law, right? So what's the first law you have? It's your constitution. But your constitution, the legislators and the wazir head of state have to put together laws, which commonly known as statutes. That gives you a legal nature, a legal argument to say, what gives you the authority to say what you're saying as a competent authority of your state. It starts with statutes. That's number one. What else gives you a legal argument? Creates a legal nature that you can stand on based upon well-served principles. Well, now, your judges have now adjudicated certain cases, which created what? Precedent or res judicata, also known as case law. So your judges, every time they adjudicate a case, they're creating case law for your state. So you stand on the square of your Moroccan legislation of your state, and you stand on the square of case law from the consul court. Okay? What else do you have? All right, you've got the treaties. The treaties is considered what? Law. Right, supreme law of the land is treaties. The treaties is law. So we invoke the treaties as law. What else do you stand on as a legal nature or legal argument? Now you can stand on international law. What else is international law? The Charter of the United Nations, and it's one hundred and eleven articles. What else can you stand on? You can stand on the International Court of Justice case law. You can use those case laws, especially when it's dealing with the United States of America. You can look at what the United States of America that I already agreed to, such as France versus the United States of America the year nineteen fifty-two. What was the judgment? That judgment immediately is recognizing international law. It's the customary norm. It's substantive law, because it's been adjudicated. And the United States of America signed that final judgment. And they accepted the terms and can, and conditions of that judgment. You see? So the Moors have to stand, it's called a legal nature. Which means now we have to recognize things such as this when we send our own CNA, our own consul notification access to the United States, and we send it to the several governors, we say, this is Moroccan law, because our state recognizes the consul notification access as an act. Okay, let's, let's go back to the top, just a moment. Right, we, we start recognizing as an act. Okay, so the consul notification access, it says consul notification and access in the receiving state. So we're the receiving state. We're claiming the sovereignty. Right? Says of Alodim Morris Predium Anti Colorado, region Empire Morocco. That's the region. But we're already saying what the state is, right? Says consul notification and access in the receiving state of Alodim Morris Predium Anti Colorado. Then it breaks down to region. Region Empire Morocco. You see that? Talking geographic location. We're talking state and region. See how we're really coming in real quick? No pause with non-ability, because we're being clear with our effective communication in the proper written instrument. Listen. Then it says, the VCCR, right? That means the Annual Convention on Council Relations, Regulation and Notification to the Foreign American President, Federal Legislators, Judges, and Federal Agents, The Governor of Colorado, Mayors, Legislators, Judges, and Local Law Enforcement, Regarding the Receiving Moroccan State Its Nationals, Diplomats, Former Moors Subjects, Proteges, and the Rights of Moors Council Officials To Assist Its Nationals and Protected Persons Without Delay in the Empire Morocco Pursuant to the Various Ratified and Deposited Moors Treaties, Moroccan State Law, and the Customs of International Law As Enshrined in the Preamble and Annexes of the United Nations Charter. You see that? This is the first page. Look how we're opening up. This is one hundred and thirty pages, but the first page, the cover page, tells them already what's up. You see? That was our obligation as Moors. We never did that. Why? Because we were miseducated. I hate to tell the Moors, but our so-called Moors American master teachers miseducated us. That's the truth. All right, listen. So this is what the United States did, because they wanted to protect Americans apart. Why? Because they were following what? The instructions, right? These particular type of instructions says, Article four, this resolution, right, about protecting diplomats and protected persons of your state. Article four, section B, says exchanging information and coordinating the, the taking of administrative and other measures as appropriate to prevent the commission of those crimes. What crime? The crime of detaining diplomats and protected persons. So the United States of America is taking extra steps to put together those measures. The Moors didn't know nothing about that. This been out since nineteen seventy-three. You understand what I'm saying? Moors had no clue. They run around saying they're the consul general of Morocco. And not even recognized by a Moroccan state. This is about state rights. Not you talking about you standing on your square. Has anybody ever seen standing on your square written in any international law resolution?
No.
Lord have mercy! How about we study the strict sense of how international law words are written? How about we study the text? So we understand the proper vernacular. That way, when we stand in front of a competent court, we're standing in front of the United States of America, the Mr. Foreign Affairs, Head of State, Consul General, Consul Court Judge. We're using the same vernacular that the whole world uses. And you ain't gonna walk in and talk about, yeah, I'm standing on my square today. That's ghetto, that's Ebonics. When it comes to Moors, that's our Ebonic talk. But that is not the common linguistics of international law. Let's continue.
Article five. One. The state party in which any of the crimes set forth in Article two has been committed shall, if it has reason to believe that an alleged offender has fled from its territory, communicate to all other states concerned directly or through the Secretary General of the United Nations all the pertinent facts regarding the crime committed and all available information regarding the identity of the alleged offender. Whenever any of the crimes set forth in Article two has been committed against an internationally protected person and a state party which has information concerning the victim and the circumstances of the crime shall endeavor to transmit it under the conditions provided for in its internal law fully and promptly to the state party on whose behalf he was exercising his functions. Upon being satisfied that the circumstances so warned, the state party in whose territory the alleged offender is present shall take the appropriate measures under its intern, internal law so as to ensure his presence for the purpose of prosecution or extradition. Such measures shall be notified without delay directly or through the Secretary General of the United Nations. A, the state where the crime was committed. B, the state or, or states of which the alleged offender is a national or if he is a stateless person in whose territory he permanently resides. C, the state or states of which the internationally protected person concerned is a national or on whose behalf he was exercising his functions. D, all other states concerned. And E, the international organization of which the internationally protected person concerned is an official or an agent. Two. Any person regarding whom the measures referred to in part, in paragraph one of this article are being taken shall be entitled, A, to communicate without delay with the nearest appropriate representative of the state of which he is a national or which is otherwise entitled to protect his rights or if he is a stateless person, which he requests and which is willing to protect his rights. And B, to be visited by a representative of that state.
Uh-huh, now listen, Moors. I'm talking to the Moors Americans who are actually not Moors Americans, because there's no such thing as a Moors American. But I'm gonna talk to you in the name that you identify yourself as, right? Have the Moors Americans wrote anything like this? Why, why, this been out since nineteen seventy-three, and the Moors been running around talking about they're officers of them, they're of the consulate? They're talking about their judges, they're talking about their prime minister, they're saying they're consul generals. Then why didn't they know this information, to write this information? Well, the reason why they didn't know it, because A, they didn't realize they were stateless. B, that means they did not have a state, which means they could not invoke these words to create Moroccan law that way they could utilize these words to their advantage. But their loss is a problem. You would have to write Moroccan laws. But Moors Americans ain't claiming to be Moroccans. Okay. Let's just say as a hypothetical, there's a such thing as Moors Americans, and which is not. But just, just say as a hypothetical, why haven't the Moors Americans through their religious organizations even wrote any type of provisions such as this to protect themselves as grand sheiks and prime ministers and whatever other fancy title they've given themselves? Why haven't they used even this language to write it in their bylaws? And I don't say that to be dismissive to any Moors American, because we're all in this together, but I gotta, I gotta point out these inconsistencies. You, you gotta understand, as Moors Americans, they don't have a clue about law. Because if you had a clue about law, the first thing you would understand is if you're not Moors American, you would understand you're Moroccans, which means which means you need Moroccan laws in order to enforce your rights. But you've been indoctrinated by your so-called master teachers and your master teachers told you, you were the true American. So you've been trying to enforce American statutes. While simultaneously saying you're not a citizen of America. You see how ridiculous that sounds? These are mistakes that we made as a people. I did it too, I'm not, I'm not innocent. I used to be a Moors American, standing on my square, didn't have a clue what I was talking about, because I was in fellowship. But the Moors American teacher kept saying, "Don't believe me, do the research," so I did the research. And I found out there's no such thing as Moors Americans. I found out there's a supreme law of land called international law, because all treaties are recognized as international law. How the Moors run around talking about treaties and you don't know nothing about international law? That's a violation in itself that makes you incompetent. So I had to figure out to myself, how do Moors get back as the proper person? Well, who's the first proper person there had to be? It's called the state. The state is the proper person, that's inappropriate persona su juris, the state is the first person in law. And that one person, which is the mother called the constitution? The constitution is matriarchal in character. Because it starts to recognize its own. And that is the person, that is the appropriate persona. The state constitution then allows the Moors to come back home because they can now pledge allegiance to said state. And then hold offices as a diplomat or simply just be a national, but certainly you want your name on one of two protected lists. One is a diplomatic list, the other one is protected person list, one is Kendrick Bay, one is Kendrick Johnson, protected under Moroccan law. Not Moors American church organizations. So all the Moors have to do is copy paste this type of language, such as Article Six, right? Article Six, Section Two, look, look, look what it says. Section Two, Any Person Regarding Whom The Measures Referred To In Paragraph One Of This Article Are Being Taken Shall Be Entitled To A, To Communicate Without Delay With The Nearest Appropriate Representative Of The State Of Which He Is A National Or Which Is Otherwise Entitled To Protect His Rights Or If He Is A Stateless Person Which He Request And Which Is Willing To Protect His Rights. The state is willing to protect the stateless person's rights.
Right.
State has to do that. So the state is the appropriate persona su juris, person who comes to represent you. And the state constitution represents the offices of the state, such as the Head of State, Mr. Foreign Affairs, Consul General, Consul Court Judges, legislators such as the Sayyid Ra'ha, which is the Speaker of the House. The other legislators called it the Lil Wazis, right, which are the other legislators. This is what Moors have to understand, we've been derelict in our own duties of understanding law and no one to our least had studied the Europeans and didn't we do it? No. What did we do? We opened up a Cracker Jack box and found a badge and then stuck it on ourselves saying, "I'm the Consul General." You in a cereal box and pulled out a badge saying, "I'm Prime Minister." No civilized people on planet earth do that except for colonized Moors and what's commonly known as the West. We've delayed our own justice. And we need to be honest and look in the mirror and blame ourselves that we've done this to ourselves. Then, once you recognize and you admit it out loud, then get to work. Don't throw a pity party, get to work, we all have to unite. Come together and fight as one people. What's the name of the people? Moroccans, period. Let's continue. Okay, this is Section B, listen. Section B. So now they detained your diplomat or your protected person, look what Section B says in Article Six, To Be Visited By A Representative Of That State Capitol West. Okay, let's increase it. Section B of Article Six, To Be Visited By A Representative Of That State Capitol West. It's about statehood. And the Moors are stateless and talking about the colors are criminal, no, the colors are alleged criminals Because the colors, everything they're doing to Moors Americans, I hate to tell the Moors Americans this. Everything the United States government and the governors and the mayors and the prosecutors are doing to Moors Americans is legal and lawful. Because the Moors Americans are still citizens of the United States of America as naturalized persons. Because you failed to read the prescriptions of treaties because you're Moors American. So-called master teachers never read the treaties out loud to you. I challenge any Moors Americans to ask their so-called teachers, hey, why haven't you read to us The Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, why don't you read that out loud? Why haven't you read to us the Act Al-Asr of nineteen oh six? And it's one hundred and twenty-three articles, including preamble, why haven't you read that out loud, master teacher? If treaty Supreme Law of Land, why aren't we reading the Supreme Law of Land out loud? That's the question? So only way you'll get representation, Moors like, uh, we gotta go help, uh, Lamont Eel. Well, who's gonna help Lamont Eel? What representative of a state is gonna help Lamont Eel? He don't have, there's no Moors American state. There's no such thing, it's Moors Americans. So who's the representative gonna help Lamont Eel? So everything you seeing is just deception, illusion, that they're helping Lamont and they can't help Brother Lamont, but let me pause right there. You say, "Okay, Jay Bay, then why aren't you helping him, Jay Bay? Jay Bay, you talking all this noise, go help Lamont." Okay, let me answer that question for you, real easy, it's called the legal nature. Let's talk law and not assumptions, presumptions, and opinion, what does the law say about Lamont's status? Okay, here we go. Madrid Convention, eighteen eighty. Article fifteen, Paragraph one is talking about Lamont Eel. It says, right here, any subject of Morocco, that's Lamont Eel, but what is Lamont's real name? Right? You gotta look at now his, his subject name. Because Lamont Eel don't exist nowhere on planet earth as a name that's recognized by Moroccan state, not yet. So that's a fictitious name, so now you gotta look at his Moors subject name on the record. Okay, so it says, any subject of Morocco, right, did it say subjects or subject? That's singular. So if your brother Lamont falls on a singular subject, it's his obligation to follow these instructions, listen. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country, i.e. United States, And who shall return to Morocco, so Lamont Eel has to return to Morocco, And he shall, shall after having remained for a length of time equal to, which shall have been readily necessary for him, Lamont, To obtain such naturalization as an American under the Fourteenth Amendment. Lamont has to what? Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire, that was his obligation. And the obligation is too quick, Morocco, unless it shall be proved that his, Lamont's, naturalization in the United States of America Was obtained with the consent of the Government of Morocco. So according to treaties, Jay Bay and Empa and all the other recognized Moroccan states cannot help Lamont Until Lamont helps himself to return to Morocco and pledges allegiance to a Moroccan state, but timeout. You say, "Well, Jay Bay, did you let Lamont Eel pledge his allegiance to Empa?" Well, their loss is a problem. Lamont Eel is in jail Within a jurisdiction that has failed to restore itself back into Moroccan state jurisdiction. Lamont Eel is not a national Empa, nor is he a resident of Empa. He does not live within our latitude longitude of our state. So we can't offer him nationality, he's way on the east coast. The Moors are derelict within the jurisdiction where he's being held, the Moors in that jurisdiction Have declared their independence, then write a constitution, Then depolish the United Nations Court of Article One oh two. Then after that, have their ballots, vote for their elected officials of three branches of government. Then have a public inauguration. And after that, those Moors of that jurisdiction, under what they call Uti Positivus Jurisdiction, Which means you converted the state back into an indigenous state. It's no longer a colonized territory. There's no three branches of government, that consul general, that Mr. Foreign Affairs, that head of state, the consul court judge of that jurisdiction Can then turn around and help Brother Lamont, can they say, "Lamont, first thing you gotta do is you gotta return back to Moroccan state, You gotta pledge your allegiance as the former Moors subject to come back and pledge your allegiance to the state Under what you call the straw man." But ain't a dang on straw man, you won't, you won't see the word straw man in international law. The provision says, subject of Morocco, it don't say strong. But your Moors American teachers told you with the straw, it's not a straw, the treaty Supreme Law of Land. Treaty language supersedes all of our Ebonics as Moors. Treaty language, your vernacular is subject of Morocco, so Lamont Under his Moors subject name, that they have on the registration of how they're in the process of indicting him And sentencing him under that subject of Morocco name, that name has to pledge his allegiance Back to the Moroccan state of that jurisdiction, of that latitude longitude of that state. Then once he does that, then he can also put Lamont Eel on the record as well of that state. So now both names on a diplomatic list, if in fact they were to make him an officer, and it's on a protected person's list. Now they tell the governor, now they tell the mayor, now they tell the prosecutor, now they tell the magistrate, Now they tell the public defender, that is one of our nationals of the state. Because the representatives of the state, the Moroccan state, can represent Lamont Eel of that jurisdiction. This is what Moors don't understand, we've been miseducated. We must understand what's commonly known as Uti Positivus Jurisdiction. Lamont can only get help from the Moors of his jurisdiction. That must be understood. In the meantime, he's still what? A subject of Morocco, and since he's still a subject of Morocco, watch this. Now we go to Paragraph Two of Article Fifteen. And I'm gonna show you why the United States still has legal and lawful jurisdiction over your brother Lamont. Listen.
Paragraph Two, Foreign Naturalization Heretofore Acquired By Subjects Of Morocco According To The Rules Established By The Laws Of Each Country Shall Be Continued To Them As Regards All Its Effects Without Any Restriction.
Okay. Listen up, Lamont Eel and your crew. Paragraph Two, that your Moors American master teacher never taught you about, but I'll teach you, listen up. Paragraph Two of Article Fifteen of Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, Paragraph Two, Foreign Naturalization. Right, so foreign naturalization meaning what? You've been classified as Fourteenth Amendment person, i.e. black. Now you're a citizen of the United States, under Paragraph Two. Foreign Naturalization Heretofore Acquired, so Lamont Eel, You were adopted by the United States under the Fourteenth Amendment. You are a naturalized person of the United States, whether you think so or not. The truth is, about the proper written instrument, this is treaty. Moors, he said treaty Supreme Law of Land, okay, Lamont Eel, I'll read the Supreme Law of Land out loud to you right now and your crew. Listen. Foreign Naturalization Heretofore Acquired By Subject Of Morocco, Lamont, Subject Of Morocco According To The Rules, The Law, Statutes Established By The Laws Of The United States Of America And Their Fifty Chartered Territories Governors Shall Be Continued To Them, who's to them? The United States and their governors As Regards All Its Effects Without Any Restriction. All because Lamont Eel's teacher never told him about the treaty in Madrid, Article Fifteen, Paragraph One and Paragraph Two. Paragraph One, Decolonization. Right? You return to Morocco to become a national of your state. Paragraph Two, Subjugation Of Naturalization Because you, by consent and acquiescence, have remained in their jurisdiction of ours. Right here, Paragraph One, Morocco, Paragraph Two, America, I'm talking jurisdiction. These are two jurisdiction clauses. So good brother Lamont, and I use Lamont's name as, as basically an example, because Lamont, Eel, first of all, I love your brother Lamont because he's a warrior, he goes hard in paint, but he's been miseducated, right? But Lamont represents the greater whole of all the Moors on the east coast to the west coast, Because all the Moors got this same mentality that they can use sovereign citizen principles, and they don't understand, this is right here. Paragraph Two, this is why the United States is getting away with what they're doing, because they're following the provisions of a treaty. And treaty Supreme Law of Land. I say the same thing to good brother Jamal Bay, arise in the Moors. Good brother Jamal. Good brother, I love you because you're a warrior. But good brother, you have been miseducated. And I know you're so-called standing on your square. But your square is based in deception and illusion, there's no such thing as Moors Americans, good brother Jamal. Matter of fact, there's no such person as Jamal Bay. Jamal Bay, when I ask you the same question I asked Lamont Eel in Class One Ten. Tell me the name of the Moroccan state that recognized your name And your name is on the registration of a Moroccan state that recognizes you as Jamal Bay. It doesn't exist. Good brother, uh, Jamal, tell me what Moroccan laws you're using right now as your defense. Well, it don't exist, because you two really trying to enforce the municipal law of the United States of America's constitution And you trying to utilize the municipal law of the several union states. And the reason why you're trying to use it, because your Moors American teacher told you, you were the true American, So you keep trying to use American statutes while simultaneously saying you're not a citizen of America. Do you see how ridiculous this sounds, good brother Jamal? You've been indoctrinated by your teachers. And your heart is so big, you don't want to believe that, you wanna say, "No, I'm gonna keep trying this Moors American thing, because these colors are just criminals," you don't realize, good brother, but you're delaying your own justice. You, you've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray by your Moors American teachers. I got reference points all day. I love you, good brother Jamal Bay, because you're a warrior, I love you, good brother Lamont Eel, you're warriors, you're not soldiers, I'll ride or die with y'all. But first, y'all gotta understand, the Supreme Law of Land is treaties and international law And both of y'all are derelict in your duties to return to Morocco. And your Moors American teacher ain't gonna ever tell you the truth. But I'm gonna tell you the truth. Now the rest is on you. Let's continue, Article Seven.
Article Seven, The State Party In Whose Territory The Alleged Offender Is Present Shall, If It Does Not Extradite Him Submit Without Exception Whatsoever And Without Undue Delay The Case To Its Competent Authorities For The Purpose Of Prosecution Through Proceedings In accordance With The Laws Of That State. Article Eight, One, To The Extent That The Crimes Set Forth In Article Two Are Not Listed As Extraditable Offenses In Any Extradition Treaty Existing Between States Parties. They Shall Be Deemed To Be Included As Such Therein. States Parties Undertake To Include Those Crimes As Extraditable Offenses In Every Future Extradition Treaty. in every future extradition treaty to be concluded between them. Two, if a state party which makes extradition conditional on the existence of a treaty receives a request for extradition from another state party with which it has no extradition treaty, it may, if it decides to extradite, consider this convention as a legal basis for extradition in respect for those crimes. Extradition shall be subject to the procedural provisions and the other conditions of the law of the requested state. Three, states' parties which do not make extradition conditional on the existence of a treaty shall recognize those crimes as extraditable offenses between themselves subject to the procedural provisions and the other conditions of the law of the requested state. Four, each of the crimes shall be treated for the purpose of extradition between states' parties as if it has been committed not only in the place in which it occurred, but also in the territories of the states required to establish their jurisdiction in accordance with paragraph one of Article three.
Like I said to the Moors, all we had to do was copy paste, plug and play, and change the language to be more specific. That we're talking about the United States of America, the United States and their several charter states in dealing with our Moroccan state, we just make the parties be known. Anytime you look at international resolutions, it's very generic language. Even though they're putting an onus on the state, because the state is a person in international law, is the obligation of said state to now set forth what? Additional language through their Moroccan laws or through foreign policy, and make sure the other foreign state is aware of what the cooperation looks like. The Moors have been derelict in their duties of understanding law, more specifically Moroccan law and international law. What are the specific instructions? What's the specific performance? This is basics 1.0 when it comes to contract law. Moors don't understand contracts. Let's continue.
Article nine, any person regarding whom proceedings are being carried out in connection with any of the crimes set forth in Article two shall be guaranteed fair treatment at all stages of the proceedings. Article ten, one, states' parties shall afford one another the greatest measure of assistance in connection with criminal proceedings brought in respect of the crimes set forth in Article two, including the supply of all evidence at their disposal necessary for the proceedings.
Pause, okay. Now look what this international law reform is getting into. They're saying, yes, if there's been an injury, if there's been an offender who did something against a person that's protected, now look what this resolution started getting to, judicial proceedings. I need to point that out to the Moors, listen to the language, they're getting into judicial proceedings. All right, let's take it from Article nine again.
Article nine, any person regarding whom proceedings are being carried out in connection with any of the crimes set forth in Article two shall be guaranteed fair treatment at all stages of the proceedings. Article ten, one, states' parties shall afford one another the greatest measure of assistance in connection with criminal proceedings brought in respect of the crimes set forth in Article two, including the supply of all evidence at their disposal necessary for the proceedings. Two, the provisions of paragraph one of this article shall not affect obligations concerning mutual judicial assistance embodied in any other treaty. Article eleven, the state party where an alleged offender is prosecuted shall communicate the final outcome of the proceedings to the Secretary General of the United Nations, who shall transmit the information to the other states' parties. Article twelve, the provisions of this convention shall not affect the application of the treaties on asylum enforced at the date of the adoption of this convention as between the states which are parties to those treaties. But a state party to this convention may not invoke those treaties with respect to another state party to those, to this convention, which is not a party to those treaties. Article thirteen, one, any dispute between two or more states' parties concerning the interpretation or application of this convention, which is not settled by negotiation, shall, at the request of one of them, be submitted to arbitration. If within six months from the date of the request for arbitration, the parties are unable to agree on the organization of the arbitration, any one of those parties may refer the dispute to the International Court of Justice by request in conformity with the statute of the court. Two, each state party may at the time of signature or ratification of this convention or accession thereto declare that it does not consider itself bound by paragraph one of this article. The other states' parties shall not be bound by paragraph one of this article with respect to any state party which has made such a reservation.
Okay, pause right there, okay, well, this resolution is getting into judicial proceedings, right? Now, I find this Article 13 very interesting. Listen. Article 13, any dispute between two or more states' parties concerning interpretation of application of this convention, which is not settled by negotiation, shall, at the request of one of them, be submitted to arbitration. If within six months from the date of the request for arbitration, the parties are unable to agree on the organization of the arbitration, any one of those parties will refer the dispute to the International Court of Justice by request in conformity with the statute of the court, right? So this is all about courts trying to settle something. If your arbitration fails, then the courts must prevail in order to settle it, right? But listen to this part two. Article 13, section two, each state party may at the time of signature or ratification of this convention or accession thereto declare that it does not consider itself bound by paragraph one, this is paragraph one, of this article. The other states' parties shall not be bound by paragraph one of this article with respect to any state party which has made such a reservation. Why, why did they have to put it in section two? See, you gotta understand something, Moors, listen to the interpretation of what they just put in. See, this has been about judicial proceedings. And it says, if arbitration falls apart, then automatically the ipso facto compulsory court would end up being the ICJ. And let's take for an example, the United States of America and the United States and their governors don't like the International Court of Justice. Because the International Court of Justice judges are always looking at the contracts. And they're gonna enforce said contract. The United States don't like contracts, and they don't like courts. They like to control the narrative, because let me explain something to the Moors. When the Moors say, we gotta reign in the order, right, our treaty say we gotta reign in the order. Well, who gives orders? Judges. You see, laws are orders in itself, don't get me wrong. It sets forth certain expectations, responsibility that you follow the law. But guess whose ultimate job is it to enforce said law ultimately? Judges, judges give orders. So we say, we gotta reign in the order. That means at the end of the day, the judges get to settle, the judges have the main power at the end of the day with their pen and their gavel. That's a lot of power in the hands of judges. So therefore, when you look at Article 13, section two of this resolution, they have to put it in this section two, because the United States of America and other states are saying, we don't really want to automatically go to the ICJ according to this paragraph one, because it says basically, the International Court of Justice would end up by default settling the matter. So they put it in section two, saying, well, we really don't want to accept that as the knee jerk obligation. We still want a little workaround and say, let's try some other means of not necessarily going to the ICJ. But why is that? Because they know the ICJ gonna get it right. You see? Now, let's pause right here. You see, Moors, when you study, you must always look for the weakness of your opponent. When you play chess, chess is a game where you take advantage of your opponent's weaknesses. What gaps they leave in their opening, middle, and endgame. You take advantage of negative space, so you can get into those crevices of the game and attack the king. Chess is about taking advantage of your opponent's blunders, mistakes. So sometimes, when you're dealing with your opponent, it's not what they say is what they sometimes don't say. So right here, we can recognize the United States as an example, what is one of their weaknesses? They don't like the ICJ. This is what they're saying out loud. Okay, but there are certain situations where they don't say it, but yet it's so pronounced that they're saying it very loud, but in a very silent way. What do I mean? Okay. So here, Article 13 talks about identifying a court. Okay, but listen. Now, let's go over the Rights Indigenous Peoples. The Rights Indigenous Peoples, which is an international treaty, got its preamble and forty-six articles. If you read the Rights Indigenous Peoples, for indigenous people are now declaring their independence, getting into statehood, so they can start to control the narrative of laws and jurisdictions. But if the indigenous people get to enact laws, then how do they enforce the laws? Through what? The courts, right? The courts is what ultimately reigns in the order. This is why you hear the United States always talking about their courts. They always talking about the Supreme Court, they always talking about the district courts, that's all they talking about, their courts. Because they know that that's the place where they're gonna be to reign in the order based upon their political ideologies. They wait for judges to settle it. Okay, now we're talking Rights Indigenous Peoples to get into statehood. But when you read the Rights Indigenous Peoples, does it mention the word court? No. Does it mention the word judge? No. Does it mention the word judicial? No. But what does it mention? Okay, listen. Now you go to Ctrl F, Ctrl F, and you put in the word adjudicate. Adjudicate, Ctrl F, the word adjudicate is mentioned one time. One time, out of forty-six articles, you won't find the word judge, jury, court, right? Judicial. So what do they do? They bury it in Article 27. And Article 27 says the following.
Article 27, states shall establish and implement in conjunction with indigenous peoples concerned a fair, independent, impartial, open, and transparent process giving due recognition to indigenous peoples' laws, traditions, customs, and land tenure systems to recognize and adjudicate the rights of indigenous peoples pertaining to their lands, territories, and resources, including those which were traditionally owned or otherwise occupied or used. Indigenous peoples shall have the right to participate in this process.
Okay, so in Article 27, it says indigenous people, i.e. Moroccans, shall have the right to participate in this process, what process? Judicial proceedings. But the indigenous people, if they're now utilizing judicial proceedings, that mean they're enforcing their laws. But they're enforcing through what institution? The judicial branch. So it says right here from the top, Article 27, states, states shall establish and implement, you see that? States shall establish and implement in conjunction with indigenous peoples concerned a fair, independent, impartial, open, and transparent process giving due recognition to indigenous peoples' laws. So if indigenous people had a law, that means they got a state. If they got a state, that mean they got a judicial branch, now they enforcing the laws of their state. Listen, their laws, traditions, customs, and land tenure system to recognize and adjudicate the rights of indigenous peoples pertaining to their lands and territories. Listen. So in Article 27, it's telling indigenous people to adjudicate based upon their laws. Right, and they can participate in this process, because it's their own laws in their own land. Now, timeout, what's my point? Forty-six articles in a long extended preamble, they never mention the word jury, they never mention the word judge, they never mention the word judicial. Then they turn around and bury the word adjudicate in Article 27. So only one article mentions a word regarding courts. So what should that tell the Moors immediately, if in fact they read this? What a silent theme that the colonists don't like is what? Courts. They don't want the indigenous people to utilize the courts, they know that the colonists' weakness is order. They know indigenous people, i.e. Moroccans, get the reign in the order through their competent courts. Because they're enforcing their own laws. So the colonists, when they wrote the Rights Indigenous Peoples, they was like, man, don't, don't say that word court, don't say the word judicial, don't say the word jury, don't say the word judge, don't say the word judiciary, don't say juridical, say adjudicate. Because most people read that word, they really don't resonate with the word adjudicate. So therefore, when the United Nations wrote this, the colonists didn't want to see those words and then talk about real order, because that means courts. So you gotta understand, it's not always what they say, it's what they don't say. And what is it that they did not say in Rights Indigenous Peoples? They didn't want to talk about courts, because that's what ultimately reigns in the order. You see? Now listen. What about courts? Oh, okay. Now, you go over to the Act of Outsetters of 1906. And the Act of Outsetters talks about who? Courts, the consul courts, right? You can go down to something such as Article 102, Ctrl F, type in the word 102. Okay, Article 102 talks about the Moors being able to utilize their courts to adjudicate, okay?
Article 102, every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consul jurisdiction and on Moor subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction.
So Article 102, the United States of America and the United States became a party to this treaty, making this the Supreme Law of Land according to their own constitution and in accordance to international law through a multilateral convention common on the Act of Outsetters. And in this multilateral convention, they agree that the Moors, the Moors get to utilize their courts against foreigners and against Moors subjects. So the Moors, competent authority of their state, gets to enforce Article 102. So that the court can reign in the order through its orders, judgments, and advisory opinions. Right, okay, listen. What do I have up here? This is the International Court of Justice, year 1952, August 27, 1952, case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus United States of America, this is a case that took place in 1952. France versus United States of America. This is a case that took place nineteen fifty-two. Right? This is why the United States don't like the ICJ. Because ICJ gonna keep it real. Because ICJ is reigning in what? The order. So, now, you come down to you put in the word, uh, see here. Yeah, one oh two. Now, Control F. Type in the word one oh two, right? Because we just read over the Act of Altisereus, Article one oh two, right? Okay, you plug in that same numerical number, one oh two, into the judgment. And it's gonna bring you to some section that talk about Article one oh two of the Act of Altisereus. This will be ICJ started to point out through this case law. And I told you in the beginning, what is your legal nature? What's your legal argument? What gives you the right to stand on a law? Well, you need what? You need laws of your state. You also need case law from your judges. You also enforce treaties in the Charter and international law. So, this is a case law that the United States of America is applicable to. And in this case, it got disclosed how the Moors get to enforce their courts through the competent consul court. Okay? So, right here, just a moment. Let's take it from the word accordingly.
Accordingly, the Acts of Altisereus presuppose the existence of the regime of capitulations, including the rights of consular jurisdiction. And many of its provisions assign particular functions to the then existing consul tribunals. Reference has been made in the course of the argument to Articles nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, forty-five, fifty-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, one oh two, and one nineteen. For example, Chapter five, which deals with the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling, contains Article one oh two, which provides every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consular jurisdiction and on Moors subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction.
Mm-hmm. So, the ICJ is pointing out to the Moors who were supposed to be sitting in the seats of government according to the Act of Altisereus, the Moors were supposed to be woke up and trained to take over the seats of government again. Literally, keep saying Moors government, Moors government throughout the Act of Altisereus, right? And the Moors government was supposed to enforcing through their consul tribunals, which is courts. Because the Moors have consul jurisdiction. And the Moors were supposed to enforcing these particular provisions through the treaty because the treaty is the law. And the treaty gave the Moors specific instructions and specific guidelines that you can use Articles nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, forty-five, fifty-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, one oh two, and one nineteen as an example in order to adjudicate foreigners and Moors subjects. So, the United States agreed to these terms and conditions in the year nineteen oh six, and they're still a party to this treaty. So, when they seen the Rights of Indigenous Peoples of the year two thousand and seven, they said, we don't want no part of that because the world is trying to get these rights back to Moors who are indigenous people of the land. So, when they wrote the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, they tried to stay away from the word court, judiciary, juridical, jury, judge. Right? They put the word adjudicate. That's their silent way of not wanting to say the word court out loud. Right? But what's important about all this? The United States already knows the power the Moors got from the ICJ. They known about this since nineteen fifty-two. And going back in the rear, they known about this since nineteen oh six because the Act of Altisereus was written in nineteen oh six. But they're now looking at it nineteen fifty-two at that time. Why don't the Moors know this? You know why they don't know? Because their so-called Moors American master teachers ain't told them about it. That's the problem. We've been miseducated and misled. This is a problem. And this is why the United States continues to label us as a people as Negro, Black, Color, then African-American, and Moors Americans. Why? Because none of those names can enforce a contract that's written for Moroccans. Now, listen. Look at what the ICJ said leading up to this. Right here, the beginning of the paragraph, start right here.
In nineteen oh six, the twelve powers of Altisereus all exercised capitulatory capitulatory rights and privileges to the extent that they were prescribed either by the general treaty by Great Britain in eighteen fifty-six or by the Spanish Treaty of eighteen sixty-one. They did so by virtue of direct treaty grant as in the case of the Great Britain or Spain, or by virtue of most favored nation clauses as in the case of the United States or without treaty rights. But with the consent or acquiescence of Morocco as in the case of certain other states.
Pause. So, the ICJ says right here that the foreigners, the Colombians, got legal and lawful rights over Moors because of the consent or acquiescence of Morocco and the Moroccans. Because we are the people. The name of the land is Morocco, but the people are Moroccans. So, the Moroccans and the Empire Morocco consented or acquiesced to the United States jurisdiction. We did that as a people because we run around calling ourselves Moors Americans and not Moroccans of Morocco, the Empire Morocco. The Empire Morocco. The Empire Morocco. The Empire of Morocco. Not the Kingdom of Morocco of nineteen fifty-six or nineteen sixty-two when that constitution came out, but the Empire of Morocco. And you're standing on it while commonly sitting here telling yourself you're American. And the treaty says it's Morocco for Moroccans. The land is named after the people, and the people is named after the land. And Moors running around here talking about they're the true Americans. And your treaty says it's the Empire, the Empire, the Empire of Morocco. This is shameful. This is your Moors American teachers have done to you. They've indoctrinated you. You've been bamboozled. Led astray. And here it is, in nineteen fifty-two, they're already telling the Moors what they need to do to get their rights. Now, hold up. Let's take it deeper because we're talking courts. Now, remember now, let me click back on it. Keep it germane. Let's keep it keep our shock group tight. Remember now, going over in this United Nations Resolution, they started talking about court proceedings. So, now, I'm trying to expand on it and make this germane to the Moors. When the Moors should take away from this generic language in international law, now, we have to take that law now and make it applicable to us. How do Moroccans enforce laws against any foreigner? For example, such as the United States of America, United States, and there are several chartered so-called states, right? Okay. So, in nineteen fifty-two, the judges started telling Moors about this, okay? So, what else did they say? They said, okay, you Moors need to go to, put in Control F in this judgment and put in page two oh two. Okay, two oh two. Okay, Moors, here we go. Let's put Control F. Let's type in the word absence, okay? A B, right? S E N C E, right? It's gonna take you automatically, okay? It's gonna take you automatically to page two oh two. Type in the word absence. Okay, part of the judgment. Okay. Let's read this because see, why are we reading this? Okay. First of all, treaties means you have an obligation, responsibility. Moors, this is our obligation to learn this. If treaties supreme law of the land, we're obligated to learn the supreme law. The ICJ has spelled this out for the Moors. The Moors been derelict in their duties. They did not understand their fiduciary responsibility to their own treaties. Which made us now the incompetent people. Therefore, we will be incompetent people because we suffer from cognitive dissonance. That means we automatically consented and acquiesced to the competent authority of the United States. Which gave them the jurisdiction over Moors and Morocco. And we need to admit that. But let's listen to what the ICJ said. We're gonna read a couple pages. Okay, from the top.
In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter.
Pause. What matter of what? Consular jurisdiction, consul court, having Moroccan judges, i.e. Moors, because Moors are what? More rockins. So, we're in the absence, Moors are not there, right? We're in the absence of our own treaty rights because we were stateless. So, let's listen to what the ICJ was saying, okay, from the top.
In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom, usage, or practice. It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejection, for rejecting custom, usage, and practice as a basis for extended consular jurisdiction and which are largely applicable to the right of assent. It is, however, necessary to point out that the very large number of instances in which Moroccan laws were referred to, the United States authorities can readily be explained as a convenient way of ensuring their incorporation in ministerial decrees binding upon the consul courts. In that way and in that way only could these laws be made enforceable as against United States nationals so long as the extended consular jurisdiction was being exercised.
Okay, so they said the only way to enforce laws against the United States, it has to come from who? The consul court. But the question is, is what type of laws? And it clearly says Moroccan laws. It says Moroccan laws. It says Moroccan, Moroccan laws. Right? Refer to the United States authorities. You're supposed to be enforcing Moroccan laws against the United States, not Moors American BS. Consul court can only enforce Moroccan laws. But there's no consul court without a Moroccan state. Why didn't the Moors know this? But your Moors American teachers tell you, oh, uh, the answer is consul court. Okay, sounds good. But the consul court must be the competent consul court of a state. Now, you got Moors from the East Coast to the West Coast talking about, I'm the consul general, and I'm the consul court, and I'm the prime minister. They hold in three or four offices. Issuing so-called court orders to the majestates of the United States of America. And all their wits and affidavits and all their so-called consul court orders are patently frivolous and arbitraried and capricious. And then they get upset when the United States of Americas U.S. District Courts fake that behind. And they get upset when the governor and the prosecutors and the majestates of the several chartered states tell them, sit down, shut up, and hold them in contempt in court. And then turn around and sentence them. They adjudicate Moors Americans. And I say this with love because we gotta point out these problems when we don't continue to repeat them. And right now, let me just say this for the record. Unfortunately, they got their brother C. Cannon-Bay locked up. Christopher Cannon-Bay, who was self-appointed as the so-called president of the United States of America Republic, commonly known as USARS. Right? And I say this with love. There's no, um, there's nothing negative against good brother C. Cannon-Bay because I've never talked to him on the phone, but I know that C. Cannon-Bay has talked to all the heads of states about Moroccan states and and good brother Christopher Cannon-Bay, he's a good brother, but he's been what? Indoctrinated. He through the Moors Science Temple. He literally saying he's the president of the United States of America Republic. Good brother C. Cannon-Bay is in jail right now. Lamont Il is in jail right now. Jamal Bay is more than likely going back to jail because he's still trying to use municipal laws as his defense. And all of these are warriors, good brothers. And don't get me wrong, the sister's been put in the work too, but I'm talking about the high-profile names right now. Lamont Il, Jamal Bay, and C. Cannon-Bay. All of them got their studies from either the Moors Science Temple or they got it from the so-called civic Moors who call themselves master teachers. If C. Cannon-Bay was the president of a state, do you think the United States could lock him up? No. You think that governors and the local police could lock up a actual president of a state? No. Wait, okay, pause right there. Pause right there. Let's go back to why I'm talking about this. Okay, we left off on Article thirteen, but what was this about? What was this? The United Nations Resolution was about what? It was about protecting is a crime if you do anything against what? Diplomatic agents. But who are protected persons and diplomatic agents? It started to define who are some of the immediate people protected as as the heads of state, right? Okay, listen. Okay, no, but Article one, can you read Article one for me again?
Yes, Article one, for the purpose of this convention, one, internationally protected persons means a head of state, including any member of a collegial body performing the functions of a head of state under their constitution of the state concern. A head of government or a minister of foreign affairs whenever any such person is in a foreign state as well as members of his family who accompany him.
Pause. C. Cannon-Bay says he's the president of the United States of America Republic. That means he's saying he's what? The head of state. Okay, right here, that would be a crime to try to lock up the head of state. Which should tell your brother C. Cannon-Bay, you ain't the competent authority of a state. Now, someone would say, oh, man, you know the United States is criminal. They lock us up no matter if we was in in a proper status. That's not true. Now, don't get me wrong. Can the United States make a mistake and lock you up because of mistaken identity? And once you prove who you are, now they know they're in a status of a criminal act. Now, if your state has proven who you are as an identity. Then, at that point, they cannot claim plausible deniability. At that point, now, they're looking at what's called gross negligence. And that comes with significant punitive damages, also known as civil and criminal proceedings. They know this. Do you think they would have locked up the president of the United States of America Republic? If in fact, he was the real president of the United States Republic? No. Do you think they would have locked up the consul general of Morocco if he was the real consul general of Morocco? No. And even if they did, it's a mistake because they turn around and then they have to correct it. But let me say this for the record. Even though the competent authority of states of Moroccans know about this through their Moroccan states, the Moors right now are going through deconization. So, you know the United States gonna get some pushback? You know the governor's gonna get some pushback? You know their mayors and their prosecutors gonna get some pushback? They're gonna try our chin. You gotta know how to pick up the proper pen and defend yourself through your state. And there lies the difference. There lies the difference. There lies the difference. And when I say that, these are competent authorities of their state. These six states who are now parties to treaties, they ratified, they promulgated their constitutions. Now, they have their offices, their names on a diplomatic list as well as the protected person list. They checking all the applicable boxes. Now, the state representatives can now go in and defend as representatives of the state in order to help any detained protected person. Therefore, the clocks of destiny starts as soon as we reach out. If in fact, when our diplomat's a protected person been detained, the clock starts right there, the United States. And there are several state governors, legislators, magistrates, prosecutors. No, that and their several state governors, legislators, magistrates, prosecutors, know that clock has started. That they're now committing alleged criminal acts. You understand what I'm saying? Now my question to good brother C. Cannon-Bay is this, and his crew at USARs, I have no disrespect to them, because I know they've been trying to fix this. I, I empathize for the USARs members. Why? Because they, they standing there, standing on that square thinking they was told the truth. And they, they were not told the truth. They don't have states. So now I would ask C. Cannon-Bay, your crew, what is your representative gonna do to help C. Cannon-Bay if in fact you are not even recognized as a state? You are not the competent authority of a state. This is what Moors have to understand. We gotta stop faking it. Even if we mean well, and what I'm saying, I mean well, what I'm saying. I, 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 I'm saying this with sincerity. We have to help the Moors. We have to educate them. This is an unpacked study session. It's an educational platform so that we can try to get rid of this dirty water, this miseducation we receive. Because the miseducation is leading to adjudication by the colonists. And I would tell C. Cannon-Bay the same thing I told Lamont Il and Jamal Bay. Good brother, C. Cannon-Bay, you too, sir, have to follow the instructions of international law, sir. You too, Mr. C. Cannon-Bay, have to follow supreme law of land. It's the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one and paragraph two. And right now, good brother C. Cannon-Bay, you following paragraph two. You did not return to Morocco through a competent state that was ratified, deposited, promulgated. We all have to learn from our mistakes and the United States is having a field day against us. Let me say this to the Moors. The United States of America, the United States and their governors are sick and tired of Moorish Americans. The Moorish Americans are clogging up the pipeline with their patently frivolous and arbitrating, capricious documents. So what they're starting to do, they're locking up everybody who's claiming to be the leader of those organizations. Just send a clear message to the rest of them beneath that so-called leader, we gonna lock you up too. They're sick and tired of Moorish Americans. And I say that with love, because I love the Moorish Americans. But guess what? I'm sick and tired of Moorish Americans too, because I've been teaching this class for two years and they have yet to course correct, even though these reference points are self-evident. And I give it because Moorish Americans have been indoctrinated. We all had suffered from cognitive dissonance. I suffered too. I thought I was a Moorish American until I started to do the research. I got out of fellowship and I certainly got out of worship. You gotta get out of both of those status and go back and read what is your so-called master teachers and grand sheets and national grand sheets won't show you this article right here. The truth is right here, Moors. We gotta learn from this. Then once you come back to Morocco, pledge your allegiance and renounce and denounce the naturalization of the United States of America and the United States Federal Corporation, now your Moroccan state can protect you. Might even elect you as an officer of the state. Might even appoint you as the consul general. Might even appoint you as a judge of the judicial branch. So then you can go back now and enforce what we're about to read as we start to close out. Now you can talk like this. Right? We're on page two oh two of the judgment of France versus United States of America. Now, this is how the judges should be writing. Okay.
The problem arises in three ways which must be considered separately. The first is in cases where the application of a Moroccan law to United States nationals would be contrary to the treaty rights of the United States.
Pause. Read that sentence again.
The problem arises in three ways which must be considered separately. The first is in cases where the application of a Moroccan law to United States nationals would be contrary to the treaty rights of the United States.
Pause. It say anything about the United States of America's Constitution? It said they enforce Moroccan laws through the Moroccan treaty. Not the United States of America's Constitution. Listen, this is what the ICJ judges are trying to tell Moors. It's that the problem arises in three ways. What problem? Talking about judicial authority. What authority do Moroccan courts have? So the ICJ starts to break it down in three parts. In order for Moors through the constable courts can enforce Moroccan law so that way they can reign in the order, judgment, or advisory opinion through the courts. Listen. The problem arises in three ways which must be considered separately. The first is in the cases where the application of Moroccan law, not the application of the Constitution of the United States. It's the application of Moroccan law to the United States nationals will be contrary to the treaty rights of the United States. The United States got treaty rights. The United States is using our Moors treaties for their rights. Why? Because we got bilateral treaties with them and we have multilateral treaties with them. Notice they didn't mention nothing about no constitutions. You put the constitutions down, you pick up international law, commonly known as treaties. This is what Moors gotta understand right off the top. It's giving Moors specific instructions. Second sentence.
In such cases, the application of Moroccan laws, whether directly or indirectly to these nationals, unless assented to by the United States, would be contrary to international law. And the, and the dispute which might arise therefrom would have to be dealt with accordingly, according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes.
Pause. Let me read the sentence again. In such cases, right? A case is in front of who? A judge. In such cases, the application of Moroccan law, so what are you using? And what, what type of laws is the judge using? Moroccan law. So in such cases, the application of Moroccan laws, whether directly or indirectly to these nationals, who are the nationals? Come on, Americans. You're adjudicating Americans. Unless assented to by the United States would be contrary to international law, meaning we don't have to get the United States permission to enforce Moroccan laws. They're trying to say, well, Moroccan laws, not, they're not subject, subject to it would be a violation of international law, because that's a violation of the treaty. They've agreed to come under the jurisdiction of the ipso jure constable court. From here again. In such cases, the application of Moroccan laws, whether directly or indirectly to these American nationals, unless assented to by the United States, will be contrary to international law and the dispute which might arise therefrom would have to be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international dispute. What's the ordinary methods of settlement of international dispute? Is first, they have to go to the constable court. That's what the contract said. Then they go to the ICJ. You must start at the constable court, then the ICJ. That's what these judges are telling you. You start with the ordinary method. And what's the ordinary method? Negotiations, which is mediation, arbitration, and judicial settlement. The first judicial settlement is through the competent constable court of Moroccan law. If the United States don't like that judgment, guess what they can appeal it to? The ICJ. You see what the court is telling them? Continue.
These considerations apply to the decree of December thirtieth of nineteen forty-eight, which the court has found to be contrary to treaty rights of the United States.
Okay, so this right here, this last sentence is not germane because that was about a trade agreement that France had with the United States. Okay, so let's move on to part two. This is what Moors gotta understand. They giving us the answer to the test on how to enforce our Moroccan laws through our Moroccan competent constable court. Okay? Part two.
Uh, the second way in which the problem arises is in the cases in which the cooperation of the constable courts is required in order to enforce the Moroccan legislation. In such cases, regardless of whether the application of the legislation would contravene treaty rights, the assent of the United States would be essential to its enforcement by the constable courts.
Okay. Have they mentioned anything about Constitution? No. The ICJ is telling Moors enforce Moroccan laws, even they even went so far to say Moors need to enforce what? The more, the more, the more, the more-rotans need to enforce Moroccan legislation. Did it say enforce the Constitution, United States of America? You see what your Moorish American teachers have done to you? They've led you astray. The whole time, we are Moroccans, like Nogadra Lee, trying to say we're descendants of Moroccans. Therefore, we should be enforcing Moroccan laws. Your Moorish American teachers told you, the true American. They lied to you. So we needed Moroccan laws to be enforceable through the consular courts. Isn't it so easy? How long this case been out? Since nineteen fifty-two. It, it's been seventy, over seventy years. Nineteen fifty-two to twenty, twenty-three. That's seventy-one years. And your Moorish American teachers have never read this out loud to you. But you gonna learn today, because we gotta save our people, don't we? The, the incompetent Moors and the competent Moors have to work together. We gotta fix this. We gotta change the education of Moors. Moors gotta become erudite in international law and not the municipal domestic laws of the United States or any of their charter several states. Let that step go. Put down their constitution, put down their municipal laws, and pick up international law and your own Moroccan laws. That's what we're reading here. I'm not making this stuff up. It's shameful that I didn't have to talk at this tone because Moors are tone deaf. So I gotta talk loud. Alright, hopefully, I know the Moors are sensitive. Forgive me for for talking like this, but I, I'm just passionate about it, right? I love all the Moors. And I know we can do so much better because Moors are highly intelligent. But you're only as intelligent as your teacher teaches you, or you go out on your own and learn what you need to know about your crime. But guess what the Moors did? They listened to the wrong teachers and they did not go out and understand what they need to know. But let me let you in on a little bit of a secret that's not so much of a secret. Your Moorish American teachers told you, don't believe me. Do the research. And y'all didn't do it. And that's true. Okay, so from the top, this second.
The second way in which the problem arises is in cases in which the cooperation of the constable courts is required in order to enforce the Moroccan legislation. In such cases, regardless of whether the application of the legislation would contravene treaty rights, the assent of the United States would be essential to its enforcement by the constable courts.
Okay, so right here it's saying, when Moors come up with legislation, right? What type of legislation? Moroccan legislation. If our Moroccan legislation contradicts the treaty rights of the United States, then yeah, we're, we're violating the treaty. Moors can't violate the treaty. We can't violate the United States human rights. That's what this second part is saying. Moors have to respect the treaty provisions. Right? Okay, number three.
The third way in which the problem arises is in cases where the application to United States nationals, otherwise than by enforcement through the constable courts of Moroccan laws which do not violate any treaty rights of the United States, is in question. In such cases, the assent of the United States authority is not required.
You see that? Listen. The third way. This is for the judges. Instructions for judges. Instructions for legislators who creating legislative, uh, legislation for the states. It says, the third way in which the problem arises is in cases where the applications to the United States nationals, otherwise than by enforcement through the constable courts of Moroccan laws, which do not violate any treaty rights of the United States, is a question. In such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required. Moors don't have to get the permission to enforce Moroccan laws against the United States nationals. Our court reigns supreme over their supreme court of the United States. Our constable court reigns supreme over any of their magistrates from the east coast to the west coast. Their judicial authority is moot. M-O-O-T. Moot. They can have no review. They can't do nothing regarding trying to undermine Moroccan law. It's not even a question. And the ICJ told me, well, if you got a question about Moroccan law, I hate to tell you.
Let me just clarify.
Let me just clarify. With this last sentence, it says, if there is a question, in such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required. We don't need their permission to enforce Moroccan laws. This came out in nineteen fifty-two. Now look how the ICJ sums it up as I'm starting to close out. Listen.
Accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, the court holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the application of laws and regulations to its nationals in the French zone requires its assent.
You see that? Let's read again. Accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, the court holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the application of Moroccan laws and Moroccan regulations to its American, American nationals in the French zone requires its assent. Now it says French zone because in nineteen fifty-two, France was still acting under the, uh, Treaty of Versailles of nineteen twelve. Keep in mind, it did not dissolve the Treaty of Versailles until nineteen fifty-six. So in nineteen fifty-two, France was controlling the empire as a de facto Sultan. So the ICJ referred to is the French zone, but it's actually what? The Moroccan empire. Let's read it again. And we're gonna change the interpretation of this word. Listen. Accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, the International Court of Justice holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the applications of Moroccan laws and Moroccan reg-, regulations to its American nationals in the Empire of Morocco requires its assent. I am with that. It's law.